Okay, are all the board members ready? Okay, if anyone could please rise, read the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Sett, we'll get a roll call vote, please. No, roll call, please.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Here.
Mrs. Sett here, Mrs. Hartsel.
Here.
Mr. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Shaheen.
Here.
Mr. Trodowski.
Here.
And Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, under announcements, we have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. We'll also be having a post-meeting executive session to discuss personnel and potential litigation. This meeting is being taped recorded, and Mrs. Trodowski is on Skype attending the meeting. Procedures for public participation are on the inside blue cover of the agenda. We'll be sticking to the three-minute rule. Having said that, any presentations by the public on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to routine approvals, number seven. Do I have a motion for one or more of seven?
Seven, eight, proceed.
Any comment from board members? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Salmonaro.
No, Mr. Ross.
It was Mr. Ross, I'm sorry. Roll call, Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to presentations by board members. Secretary of Correspondence.
I have one.
Okay. BCIU report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Basil. The BCIU held their meeting June 16th, I believe all of you had, at your place. The what happened notes, just a few highlights for everyone's benefit. The BCIU board publicly commended over 1,300 BCIU employees for the following, the upcoming year and the year after, wage freezes and benefits. In the next fiscal year, they will be realizing the savings of $895,000 and over the two-year freeze, over $1.5 million.
That's great.
Yes, thank you. We also elected board officers, that being the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary. We also wanted to recognize that this year marks the 40th year of service of the BCIU to the Berks County School Districts. So, this year they turned 40. Just a few actions that were taken. We reviewed nine budgets, initial budgets, and seven changes to budgets. We awarded contracts through the Berks County Schools Joint Purchasing Board for materials, being assorted food items, supplies, paper, and equipment. We approved a second reading of several proposed and revised policies. We authorized agreement with provider staff for speech therapy services. We agreed to continue the services of Andrew E. Faust Esquire for our special education consulting. And we also approved the cancellation of the July board meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Trodowski, can you talk a little bit about the BCTC?
Sure. The BCTC met last Wednesday evening, and we did some first readings and second readings on some policies regarding fund balance, which we've done ourselves here at Daniel Boone, and also possession of use of acid inhalers and external anal injectors. They also did new readings on new conduct and disciplinary procedures. We approved a memo of understanding with the Act 93 group, in which they agreed to freeze their salaries for the 2012 and 2013 year, would be next year. And they are hoping that, and taking, they came to us and are hoping that maybe the teachers and contracts stand for policy next year as well. Really, there was the rest, there was just routine approvals, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or get answers, please.
Great. Any questions for Mrs. Trodowski? Okay, seeing none. National Student Government Report, Legislative Report.
Yeah, those email given through today, and we probably all received, were the Republican part of the Harrisburg government released a spreadsheet. It was supposed to have numbers. I tried to download it, it didn't come down, so I don't know if Mrs. Penze had a chance to look at it. But how close were the numbers to what we had thought we were going to be getting? Again, the only preliminaries haven't been voted on yet.
Well, what I have is just from the Senate, and from what the governor originally gave us to what the Senate has come out with for the basic education, it's about, I don't know, let's say like $11,000 or less. So, that's not a whole lot, but, I mean, still, that's not the governor's, that's just the Senate piece. And the Senate piece also had some money back for the accountability block grant, which is about $154,000. Currently, we have nothing in the budget because the governor did away with it in his preliminary, so we have to wait and see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my understanding was there is some discussion in Harrisburg, they're going to bring $100 million back for the accountability block grant.
Right.
And, but that hadn't been settled yet, something like $50 million was coming from reserves, and another $50 million was coming from surplus.
I know they were originally talking about the Department of Public Welfare taking money from there, so I'm not sure.
But at the same time, the government wasn't a fan of that either, so, his desk, it may not make it. So, I mean, don't count that money at all.
Right, okay. Any other reports?
Under Facilities, we met on June 6th, and I'll briefly submit it just to the board. Hopefully, everyone had attachments on that. As far as the Daniel Boone Coaches Association and the Berkshire Baseball Group, these two associations or clubs have greatly contributed to Daniel Boone alone well with other districts. So, you know, I would get this out there to the public, for them to review, we'd have a great deal of what all they've done for the community. Also, under the high school, we have foundations going in. I think Mr. Smith would like to try it for tomorrow, if not, if he did a little bit today. So, we're trying to find out when scheduling for the modular bathroom will be in place. And also, on here, we do have the APC, as far as the boiler going to boot tonight, so that's a situation that needs to be addressed.
Okay. So, any questions for Facilities? Okay, anything from the other hands, or?
No.
Okay.
Finance meeting did not happen in June either, just because of the, what we had going on with the budget meetings and community hall meetings. I'd like to try to set something up for July, so I will email everyone about that. In terms of Burks C.I.T., the big issue there is the executive director, who's been there forever and has done a great job, is retiring. So, we're in the process of hiring a new executive director for Burks C.I.T. We have a meeting tomorrow night, and I'll let the board know how that goes. Any other committee reports?
Okay, seeing none. Buildings and grounds, it's recommended the board of directors approve the purchase of an APC boiler from the state bid at a cost of $107,232, as recommended by the Facilities Committee. Funds to be taken from capital reserve account, so I have a motion. So move. Second, Mr. Ross. Mr. Potts, second. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mr. Ross, second by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to 10 financial approvals.
10 A through M with the exception of L.
A through M with the exception of L.
I think we need to split out K, too.
I think we need, yeah, K.
Okay, yeah.
So, 10 A through?
A through M, exception of K and L.
And I think we need to split out M because we can't approve the homestead until we approve the budget.
Three strikes in a row.
A through J, please.
A through J.
I suck at that.
You sure?
No.
Any discussion by board? Okay, seeing none. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, I have a first from Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mrs. Sett, for 10 A through J. Roll call, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, and Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, in terms of item number K, I have to apologize, in what I reviewed the agenda here, that slipped by me as well. We've already discussed this PSBA invoice in the amount of $10,891 for the benefit of the public, that's the membership of the school district to be part of PASBA, Pennsylvania School Boards Association. We receive a lot of benefits from that. One of the issues that had come up previously was that, why would we spend this money at a time of budget crisis for the information that we receive and the services that we receive from PASBA? So, one of the things we had discussed was not being a part of it this year. After further research, we found out that the insurance that we get through PASBA actually saves the school district $39,000, as opposed if we were going out and getting it on our own. And so, the net savings by being a member of PASBA is around $29,000. So, it behooves the district to be a part of PASBA, in the essence, that it saves us 30 grand a year, or at least for this coming year. I don't know what else there is to really say about that.
So, I mean, do we have to make a motion to vote on that, then?
I don't know.
I think because it was tabled, the people who tabled it, who voted for the table, need to bring it back to the floor.
Okay.
And I think it was a unanimous table, so anybody could make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve membership.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Potts. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Sett.
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to L.
Make a motion for L.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion by the board? Okay, seeing none.
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Salmonaro. Roll call, Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
No.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
No.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, Margaret, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading, yeah, thank you. M, it is recommended the board of directors approve the 2011 Homestead and Homestead exclusion resolution presented by the business office.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion by the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Sett.
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Ross. Roll call, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to personnel approvals.
11 A through I with the exception of C-1A.
And C-2C, please.
Yes. I didn't have my glasses, so I see.
C-1A and C-2C.
So, you want all of them through?
Yes.
So, you're doing 11A through?
All of them.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to C-1A.
We sort of named it in the figure.
We need to sort of name it in the figure, so. Yeah, I wanted to make sure I got the initial. Okay, under administrative staff, Brian S. Campbell, Director of Educational Technology, at $85,000 effective through the date?
September 5th?
No, actually.
Are we going to?
Well, no, whatever Mike, Mike puts it final day.
Brian, can we put it based on his final date?
His final release date from his current employment.
Uh, yes, you can do that.
Penning release from current.
Penning.
Okay.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just want to welcome, I just wanted to welcome Mr. Campbell to the Daniel Boone Area School District. It's not quite official yet, but we enjoyed interviewing with him, we think he's going to be a fine candidate, and we're going to miss Mr. Jacobs. So, without any further comment, and Mrs. Sett.
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second by Mr. Potts. Roll call, Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I would like to thank Mr.?
Yeah, go ahead. Can I? I would just like to thank Mr. Jacobs and his team, Mike kind of agreed to, as part
of his retirement from the district, to help us in assisting finding a new technology director. Mr. Campbell comes with great recommendations, the board has had a chance to sit with him, I've had a chance to meet with him as well through these interviews, and we are looking forward to his tenure in the Daniel Boone School District, so, welcome aboard, Brian.
Okay, moving on to D to?
11, C-2C.
C-2C, right, sorry, C-2C.
Motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ross.
Second.
Can we get a, any discussion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Ross. Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, abstain. Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second scroll from my agenda here. Okay, we're moving on to number 12. Do I have a motion for A, B, C, all of them?
A through C.
A through C, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough is the second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have the first made by Mr. Shaheen, the second made by Mr. McCullough. Roll call, Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to policies. It's recommended the board of directors approve Policy 624, Fund Balance. Any comments?
I need a motion.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and move it, but you're gonna?
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Shaheen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a recommendation, I'd like to change it. I think permitting fund balance to drop to 1% is crazy, and I would like to change that to 3% because I think that's the minimal amount that this school district could be in a safe position. I think it's wrong to make a policy which will put the district into financial peril.
Brian?
Can you change a recommendation that is?
This is a second reading of this policy?
Correct, second reading, yeah. We'd have to reject it.
Well, hold on, what are we deciding to do here? Because my personal opinion is we keep the fund balance policy as written. My personal opinion is exactly the reason why, the insinuation that this policy prevents you from spending less than 1%, or 3%, or 4%, whatever the number is, is exactly one of the reasons why the finance committee decided to put the number artificially low, because I could see this being used as a bailiwick during a budget discussion, as to how we're going to spend our monies. And it's a misconception of the fund balance. Fund balance doesn't say you can't spend below. The fund balance says, once you do, you will make efforts to increase the fund balance, to put forth a plan to increase the fund balance again. And so, just with that insinuation alone, not only this board, but future boards, I could see this policy becoming a weapon during budget discussions on how we're going to spend our money. Whether you're going to raise taxes, or use fund balance, or you're going to cut programming, if you're going to also start pointing to a policy saying, well, you can't spend less than this, and that's not what the policy says, I think that's a real hazard moving forward. And I'd hate to see this school board shackle the hands of future boards on how it's going to manage its finances going forward. So, I think as much flexibility as possible needs to be there to do that. I strongly disagree with that. I think that we consulted our professionals. Quite frankly, this policy was brought to us by our auditors, who indicated that we had to add it in order to comply with the GASP provision. There are outside professionals made a strong recommendation that that be in the range of, I believe, 4% of fund balance in order to be a safety net for the school district, and I think we should listen to the professionals that we hire. They, her mind works within numerous school districts, and I think that the same person advised us is advising a number of these other school districts on how to go back doing that policy. We wouldn't even know about this except for the fact that her mind brought it to us in the first place. I think we should listen to those outside professionals, that's why we hire them.
Just as an added point of clarification, this policy speaks to unrestricted fund balance.
That's correct.
Correct. Not the entire fund balance.
That's correct. Okay, any other comments?
I'd just like to note, Mr. Ross made reference to it, Mrs. Penze also indicated it to me, that you are required to adopt, or, you know, the recommendation is to have this in place for July 1, some policy, so.
And if we were to change it, we'd have to go through?
Well, no, I think you could change, I think you could change it at the table, but you need to have a policy approved tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other board comment? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mr. Shaheen, a second made by Mr. Salmonaro. Roll call, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
No.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
No.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, no. Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to B, it's recommended the board of directors approve Policy 114, Extracurricular Co-curricular Activities and Athletics. Is there a motion? I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear it. I move 13B and C.
I was gonna say, I'm looking to see what the difference is, the one is revised, but yeah, I'll second that B and C.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first made by Mrs. Sett, a second made by Mr. Shaheen. Roll call, Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski.
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Sett, yes, Mrs. Hartsel.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Transportation. Nothing? Okay, under old business, it's recommended the board of directors approve, I'm going to place in here Scott Potts to replace Mrs. Sett as a member of the Curriculum Instruction Committee. Do I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to clarify, I did receive a couple of board members requesting this position. In light of Mrs. Sett's issue of continuity, the only one that was not up for election was Mr. Potts, and so, I thought he would be a good fit for the committee in taking that continuity forward. I would also, just as a sidebar, suggest maybe to the board that this committee stops being an ad hoc, and we talk about?
That has to come from the committee.
Yeah, I know that, I'm making just a comment here that?
Your personal opinion.
My personal opinion would be that this should become a standing committee, and therefore, participation in this thing can vary from year to year depending on interest.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that thought, and I would strongly agree with that, I think
I think that curriculum education is what this school is all about and I think that it's one of the most important things for the school board to address.
And I think the committee is headed in that direction. But, you know, as with any committee, we'd like to make sure that we have a function, a statement of what we're going to do and so that we don't tend to go off on tangents too. So, it's part of what we're going to probably work on in the next couple of meetings.
Well, just because it's a standing committee doesn't mean it has to meet every month. It could meet when there's issues to be addressed, but I think that there should be a process for the board to address educational issues.
No, I'm not disagreeing, Mr. Ross. I'm saying we want to make sure that we have a finite mission statement so that we don't become the dumping ground and something that doesn't have someplace else to go.
My only comment would be is if that's the direction of the board, you should hopefully want to have it by reorganization so that new board members should come in and make their request for by January, which means we have to change the policy that talks about